Okay, I think we're ready to begin our meeting today. Got several things to cover, so we will call us to order and get started before we ask the manager for what he's got. Commissioners, you want to bring up anything now? Yeah, that'd be good, Todd. Go ahead.
I want to talk real quick about the request. KNRC has been asked to sue the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, forcing them to submit a policy, a policy which we support, through the United States Congress for a review. I think everyone's been briefed on it. It's going to be paid for by the Pacific Legal Foundation. This is basically, there's a rule that has not been submitted to Congressional Review Act that was actually used to help in the prairie chicken fight, and it forces the federal government to deal with local estate plans and municipalities. Is that right? Basically.
That's correct.
There it is. And so, the idea is, first of all, if it's submitted to Congress for review, then that act can't be challenged itself for not having been implemented without following law. Plus, it sets the precedent that everything needs to be submitted to Congress like the law says, because they give us Congress an opportunity to review all regulations in this area, I guess. So, anyway, and they're just wanting us to say yeah, and they fill out a little ballot and say, do we support the KNRC being involved in this?
And there's, you know, there's no downside for Cedric County.
Yeah, we don't have to pay this. I mean, the downside is, you know, we could lose, I guess, but I don't think they will. They don't even think the environmental groups will oppose this, because they support the underlying rule. It's not about the underlying rule itself. Everyone likes that rule, but it wasn't submitted to Congress for review, and they want us to establish that as a precedent, so they're going forward. You know, nothing bad could be, you know, passed and then not put forward to Congress before review, and then that, you know, that would be counted back, so they want to make sure it makes this forward. So, you just need to talk about it, probably, the yes or no, and then let them know.
But this doesn't take a, some sort of resolution from the bench, does it? I mean, by consensus, can we join this?
Yeah. They want us to fill out a ballot, say, yes, we support it, no. And I didn't think that I wanted to say personally for everybody that we're okay with that. I guess we just would sign it and date it and send it to them, just so that they can take off, tell the Pacific Legal Foundation that everyone in KNRC supports it at all. Is all there's to say.
Commissioners, are there any comments or objections to this suggestion?
I've been briefed on it. I don't have a problem with us supporting it.
I'd say the consensus is, you're free to go ahead and check the box.
It's okay if I just fill it out and fax it?
Right.
Okay.
I'll do that. Anything else, Commissioners, before we get started? All right, then, Mr. Manager, what are you going to inform us about today?
All right, Commissioners, we have two topics we're going to talk about. First one, we're going to have Lindsey give us a financial update, go over the unfunded budget request form, and a couple of policy updates using Brent, and also, I believe, Joe Norton's here. And then we'll roll into that to file fire policy transition, basically, from the union. Let's you know of, basically, the strategic topics related to that, and some policy changes that occurred based off of that, and we'll let Tavis, and with supporting help from Eileen, support that briefing. But first, Lindsey?
All right. Commissioners, good morning. The item before you now is a list of the requests we have received thus far in 2017 and 2018 for funding outside of the normal budget process. Some of these have already been paid. Some still need some decision as to whether we ought to bring a funding agreement to you, or whether we need to get back with these folks and let them know that they can come back through the 2019 budget process and make a request, but we're not prepared to fund them right now. And then Brent will go through, after we kind of go through this list, and let you know the proposed process that we have going forward. So, I know this is a little hard to see, so I'll make it a little bigger here. And let me explain this sheet. So, this is simply a scenario-type builder. It is not intended to be a statement of what reality really is. These are, again, all of the requests we have received through various sources that now need some direction. So, at the top of this sheet, what you'll see is the general fund forecast for 2017 and 2018 based on the adopted budget, which, awesome job to budget, they just got that adopted book to print this week. But that shows the original general fund forecasted surplus in each year. You'll see that, as of right now, we have about a $1 million surplus projected in 2017 in the county general fund, and in 2018, we have a surplus of about $24,000. Included in that is unanticipated spending. We don't necessarily know how it's going to be used, but we do believe it will happen, just because events throughout the year do come up. There are sometimes issues, especially within public safety, where we need to provide some additional funding. And so, we do, within our contingencies, forecast some spending. And so, for 2017, that forecast currently includes spending of $649,000. We don't yet know exactly how it's going to be spent. But of course, as we come into year end, and people start looking as though they may exceed their budgets, they'll work with us in the office to work through those things. And so, there could be some demands on this money, other than what's just listed here in the sheet. For 2018, there's about $700,000 included in the forecast right now, again, for unanticipated spending. That includes all of our contingencies, the operating reserve, the public safety contingency, and the B.O.C.C. contingency. All of those forecasted amounts are included. So, the way this sheet works, then, is we will list all of the individual types of funding that have been requested, and how much those requests are. Over to the left, there are two columns. One shows if it's already been paid in 2017, in which case, there's not really a decision to be made. We just wanted to go ahead and illustrate what those unbudgeted things were so far this year. And then, the second column says, in or out of the scenario calculation. And this is where I hope that today can be a dynamic discussion. As you all give your firms no's, we're definitely not interested in pursuing this, send them back through the budget process, or if there's some general interest in learning more and potentially having an item come to you, then we'll change the X and include it. So, as we mark these with X's in that second column, this total impact to forecast section will change. And so, what this calculation does is it takes where we start with, it applies any of the spending against the forecasted contingency use, and then, once we use up all that forecasted contingency use, it starts to impact the overall bottom line from the very top row. So, for example, we start with a surplus of $989,000. That assumes, though, that there's $649,000 in 2017 that we can still spend. So, another way to think of it is, if we didn't spend, if we didn't have any unanticipated spending, our surplus would be closer to 1.6 million. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So, then we start applying these figures. This total spending of about 1.2 million, as applied to that 1.6 million, gives us an estimated ending operating surplus of 439,000. So, essentially, what we're looking at here is just how much do our revenues and expenses net out against each other in the course of the year? And so, at the end of the year, would we add money to our fund balance in the general fund, or would we detract from it? So, in the model that's shown right now, we have a positive number in 2017, and so that means we would plan to add cash to our ending fund balance. In 2018, we have a negative number, so based, if we did all of the things listed here, we could plan to have an operating deficit next year, which would reduce our overall fund balance. Again, we have a pretty healthy fund balance. It's one of the things that Standard Empowers, in their recent report, actually gave us credit for, but we do need to be cognizant of that and plan for it. And one of the directives Commissioners did give us through the budget process this year was not to have a deficit in the general fund. So, of course, we want to try and manage the operations to prevent that, unless there's a policy decision by you all that allows some targeted use of that fund balance. So, with all of that said, we'll get into some of the details here. I'm going to freeze this screen here, so we can see a little better. And so, the very first item that's pulled up is the Law Enforcement Training Center CIP Amendment, and then we have the Murdoch Tag Office CIP Amendment, where we had to add some cash earlier this year. Those things came to you as CIP amendments, and so, that actually has already been approved, and that cash has already been transferred, and we do anticipate that those are one-time expenses. A few weeks ago, you heard from WEBA, well, you heard from Brent Shelton, about a request from WEBA for $125,000 in 2018 to fund a position. And the current agreement with City of Wichita for them is through 2018. And so, at this point, since we have had some public discussion on that, if we need to bring a funding agreement back to you, that's certainly something we can do. Otherwise, again, we would encourage them to come back through the 2019 budget process and make that ask of you with some information. And so, I guess I will defer to the Commissioners. If you'd like to maybe go through this list, have me go through all of these, and then come back and discuss, or if you'd like to discuss one by one?
Well, I'll just say my opinion, I think all these should go through the budget process. I mean, I was just briefed on a thing yesterday about, what is the CAD system, the law enforcement and regional corporations, you know, that costs money. I mean, that should be in that discussion as well, and I think I'd rather put money towards that than kind of nickel and dime ourselves. That's just me, but nevertheless, I think all of this stuff should go through the budget process, to try and minimize this as much as possible, I think. It creates a little chaos, and then we can focus on these things here, then we just step back and say, like, we have this CAD thing, we need money, and we've got money, I think we need to put it to something tighter. I just...
Okay.
So, this column, 2018, you would recommend not funding any of that in 2018?
Well, I would recommend...
And have them put it in the process for 2019?
Right. I don't think there's, yeah.
Okay.
That's why we have a budget process, where I don't consider any of these, you know, to be emergent, I wouldn't think. I mean, I think we need to make a decision on SCAD, but outside of that, I mean, these would...
Okay. Did you want to...
Well, speaking of CAD, Lindsey, you brought up bonding of the Reagan Building to me yesterday. Do you want to talk about that to get money for CAD?
We sure can. So, one of the potential options we have, we know that for the CAD and RMS system, there is a potential demand for up to maybe 5 million, although that's still, at this point, is just a tentative estimate. We still need to go through the RFI process and find out what those real dollars would be. We know that in the most recent budget you adopted for 2018, you did set aside $1 million to be transferred to the equipment reserve to be used toward the CAD system, and we have that in the financial forecast also for 2019 and 2020. So, that would give us a total of $3 million, which would give us, then, a balance of $2 million that we would need to cover. And so, one of the options we had discussed, and Joe Norton is here, and so, if you have any technical questions, I will be happy to defer to him. But we do have the option to fully bond the costs associated with the Ronald Reagan Building. You may recall that back when this project was actually approved by the Commission, there was intent to bond the full project, and that was about $14 million, based on the estimates at the time. Since then, the decision was made to do less renovation work to the building and to do it in phases, and so, the total costs are upwards of 8 to 8.5 million dollars that we expect to spend on the project. And so, we've already bonded 5.3 million for the acquisition of the building. We have until March, where we could bond the remainder of those costs. And so, that would be something that, if you all are interested potentially in pursuing that option, then we would work with Gilmore and Bell and with our municipal advisor, Springstead, to put together a potential package for your considerations and a timeline.
And that would free up money, so we could help our law enforcement community?
Right. That could be another 3 million to 3.5 million dollars likely of additional cash that could be put either into the general fund or an equipment reserve fund to be used to make that purchase, yes. Sorry.
Well, that, I'm just interested in trying to help our sheriff and our district attorney, because they need help now. And if that's money accessible now, I think that's something we need to pull the Commission on.
Okay.
David?
Yeah? I definitely want to support our sheriff and our district attorney. I'd like to find the money somehow. My concern is if we go out and bond the LETC, and we pull that money out, and then we use it to spend it for a computer system, which life expectancy might be 10 years, then we're doing a shell game with money, and we're actually bonding, the CAD system is what the end result would be, and I don't believe that we need to bond something that has a short lifespan, such as technology. So, I think we need to find the money someplace else, rather than bonding the LETC and moving that money over, because that is strictly a shell game on bonding technology, and I'm completely against bonding technology.
Lindsey, we're not necessarily advocating for bonding the LETC. We're talking Ronald Reagan.
Right, yes.
Okay, Ronald Reagan, I'm sorry. Ronald Reagan. Disregard, disregard all my comments, change it to Ronald Reagan.
And that's 5.3 million dollars.
We've already bonded the 5.3 million. It could be another probably 3.5 million dollars, based on what we spent so far.
So, the fact that it's the Reagan Building?
No, that doesn't bother me. My concern is, if we...
It doesn't change your opposition?
No.
It doesn't change my opposition, based on the building whatsoever. My opposition is bonding that and then using it for technology.
Keep in mind, you said we have a mechanism to get 3 million. We've estimated 5, but it may not be that much. Another option is always to pay money out of our reserves and then pay ourselves back in the future, then you avoid that, or you can just take it out. You've got 600,000. There's lots of ways to pay for this for cash without bonding technology, like you said.
Well, I would, I don't accept the premise that this is a shell game to bond technology. What we're doing is we're managing our financial resources in such a way that capital assets we're going to bond, which is the Reagan Building, and then we have these financial resources that we're going to use under the best management decisions that we can make, because there seems to be a timing and a direct connection. I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner, but I don't think that we're, I think we're just, are we going to bond long-term capital assets, so that we can have a better ability to manage our current resources and not use current resources for long-term assets? I think that's another way to look at it. I think we should bond long-term capital assets and keep our operating monies in hand, so we can use them for whatever needs we have. So, I'm spinning your comments back the other way, but it's a long way to say, I don't agree with your premise that we're doing a shell game. So, I would stand in favor of bonding the Reagan Building. I was in favor of that when we started, and I still am.
But when you bond that, you incur a principal and interest payment for the next power law that makes it difficult for you to meet your operational needs in the future?
Well, there is going to be costs associated with bonding, there's no doubt. But if that's a legitimate way to manage our resources and to do good capital financing, that's what we ought to do. But I mean, absolutely, there's going to be costs associated with bonding. Michael?
So, Lindsey, as our CFO, could you put us together just an outline about this potential bonding of the Reagan Building?
We'd be happy to.
Yesterday, you thought it'd be in the county's best interest, when we were talking, to go ahead and bond it because of rates and a variety of issues, correct?
I think it's certainly a good option for us. I don't know that, as a policy decision, it's necessarily in the best interest, depending on how Commissioners choose, they want to do the bonding. But yes, we do have great opportunities for low rates right now, and now would be a good time to do it, if we're going to. But yes, I'd be very happy to put together what those dollars would look like over time, what the impact would be.
Keep in mind, the best rate is zero.
It's a fair point.
Which we can accomplish.
And I don't have a basic problem with bonding long-term projects, roads, bridges, buildings. My problem is, if you tie that to a short-term project, then I'm opposed to it.
Okay.
Especially technology that goes out of date.
The current RMS system, how long has it been operational? The current sophomore ring?
Our system, we've been...
No.
So, that's 12 years.
Well, I appreciate that information, but I'm not tying it at all. It's two separate deals. One is, how do we handle capital and projects, and the other, and then, how do we best manage our operating needs? And they're not tied together in that way.
That was the way it was briefed.
I'm sorry. I made it that way.
Okay.
Why'd you do that?
I don't know. Confused the Colonel. I apologize.
All right. Well, so what, I mean, what do we do now? I mean, are we at a point here, we need to make a decision and tell you something?
For the bonding? I think at this point, if information's been requested, that's kind of the next stage of the process. There is at least enough interest, I think, to generate that, and that's kind of what we needed to know, is that even there?
Okay.
And so, we'll go back and put together what that financial package could look like, and then show what the timeline would be, and come back to you with that, either in staff meeting or a memo, or however.
What's the drop dead date on doing that bonding, using Ronald Reagan Building?
I will defer to Mr. Norton on that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Manager? Good morning. Joe Norton with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond council. Federal tax laws place certain restrictions on how long you can reimburse yourself for expenditures made from tax-exempt bond proceeds. The general rule is that if you want to go ahead and advance with your own money, then you can reimburse yourself if you pass a resolution declaring an intent to bond the project, which the Commission did in 2014. To do a tax-exempt financing, we have to look at the later of a couple of dates. One is, the ultimate timeframe is 18 months after an asset has been placed in service. And based on the information we looked at briefly at last time we got together, that was around October of '16, and so, our 18 months would be up at the end of March, give or take a few days, when we get more specific. So, basically, if we want to do a tax-exempt financing, which makes a lot of sense, other than doing a taxable financing at a higher rate, then we would need to get started probably right after the first of the year, at the latest, to move forward and advertise a sale, get a sale done, do a closing. Again, you know, you could, under our state law, you could bond up to 30 years, but the Commission would have the decision on how long to amortize that debt. Obviously, you could do it shorter if you wanted to. And the theory behind the federal law is reimbursement. In other words, you declared an intent to finance a capital asset three years ago, you did part of the financing and advanced cash. So, what the theory would be under the federal law is that you would do a bond issue now, reimburse yourself for the cash you've advanced, put it back where it started, and then you have the asset financed on a term basis that you, I'm glad that was you and not me.
Excuse me.
So, that's the theory behind the federal law. So, declare an intent, advance money if you want to, borrow money, go back and finance it for that capital asset, for the life of that asset, or shorter if you want to, giving you back the cash that you borrowed, quote-unquote, "from some other fund," put it back where it was, to do with whatever you want to in the future.
So, a decision, we need to give you a direction before Christmas?
That would be helpful, but probably the first week in January would be about the latest time we could probably do it.
All right.
Any questions?
I don't think, thank you, Joe. All right, I think we're ready to go. Or go ahead, David.
What happens with this 2017 column, then?
So, well, that's, if it's okay, I'd like to return back to the list, and we'll go through that discussion. So, we do still need to know, separating ourselves away from that, the bonding discussion, which we will prepare information and come back to you soon on. We need to talk about whether or not there is an expectation from Commissioners that we come back to you before year end with funding agreements for some of these 2017 requests, so that we can make sure we get these folks paid, if that's our intention. For 2018, we need to have kind of a similar discussion, but it's not remotely as urgent. Thank you, Jessica. Because we know that we still have plenty of time through the 2018 fiscal year to consider this, if we need to, although I am sure that most of these folks would like some kind of direction as to whether they're going to receive this funding or not soon. So, with that...
There may be some, like ICM, that we do need a pretty quick answer on. There are some in 2018 that we need...
That's a fair point. So, for WEBA, I think that's kind of where we were. They had made the request for $125,000. We had the presentation at a B.O.C.C. staff meeting at this point, based on what I have informally heard, it sounds as though we ought to direct them to come back through the 2019 budget process. But I guess if there can be some, if there are any objections to that, I guess I would like to hear.
I guess I'm confused, because I thought Richard said that all this stuff in 2018 we were going to bring back into the budget process, so we're looking at 2017, aren't we?
Well, I think he...
And right now, on WEBA, there's zero.
I think he mentioned that. If that's what other Commissioners would like to do, then certainly, we can stop the discussion now and just direct our folks to say that. But there are some, to the manager's point, like ICM, where we don't want to just table them completely at this point. I think it would be good, at least, to maybe go point by point, just to talk about what they are, and make sure that we have that opportunity to...
But he is saying WEBA is listed as zero here for this year.
Right. It is.
So, are we talking 2017 as zero? Then we're not talking about WEBA.
The point that you made, Commissioner, is the budget process for 2018, we've already done.
I agree.
So, we don't have a column on here for 2019. We would move all that to 2019, if you're wanting to put it into a budget process. But a lot of those in 2018, we need answers on whether we're going to fund it for 2018.
But some of these things that you've got under 2017 haven't been funded.
No.
So, we have to make a decision on that quickly.
We need answers on that. But you could also, some of these, like USS Wichita, you know, we certainly need an answer for that, because that's this calendar year. But there are some that you can, like DOC, if you're going to fund it, you know, $100,000 this year, you can make the same vote of whether you want to do that for next year or not, or table it until next year. You know, we can take it line by line, but we need, for the 2017, we certainly need answers on that, if we can today.
Well, let's go through it line by line.
Okay.
Let's go through it line by line.
Yeah, here we go.
Okay.
And many of them, as Tom is saying, have already been spent, but they're on here because we did, we, but we put into the 2017 unfinanced requirements.
So, if we're on line number five here with WEBA, the question you're asking, do you want to change zero to anything other this year, and for 2018, do we want them, do we want to make that a zero and tell them to come back for the budget process next year for inclusion in '19?
That's a very good way to put it. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I, I think that, my opinion is, is that WEBA should come back next year and ask for budgeting in our process for 2019.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
Am I saying that, Mr. Chairman, we need nothing for '18?
That's correct. They need to come back and come through our budget.
Okay. DOC, there have been some competing numbers over time about what the ask is, but my understanding, based on discussion yesterday, is that the ask right now is about $200,000, $100,000 this year, $100,000 next year. And so, this is another one where we would want to have a funding agreement come before you, with any terms you'd like to stipulate, probably at your December 20th meeting, if we need to.
Well, I think all of us have been contacted by representatives from that project. You have not? You have not? Well, we'll make sure that happens. They will make sure that happens, I think. But numbers have been all over the place, and I just soon, soon us come to a conclusion and-
Mr. Chairman?
Have a decision made, yes, sir.
I've had a couple of members of the Commission ask me in regard to that particular appropriation, whether or not we want to make it, when we draft our funding agreement, make a condition on them to remain in the community. Is that still something you all, or anything for the community?
I would agree with that, I think that was Commissioner Dennis's recommendation. I think that's, you know, the, it's obvious, a great thing like that, it's pretty mobile. Some other community might want to take it away, if we give them money, we want them to stay here. The question is, at what level? And, and can we come to a consensus here and kind of make plans on that? Are we breaking some kind of law?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Who wants to speak first?
I, I say we should go into the budget thing. I personally wouldn't support this $200,000, again. I, I think it didn't do the thing for the share for the DA, that's just, we have, keep in mind, that's $200,000 we increased. What was it, the disposal fee or whatever, so we could get another $200,000 of revenue to take care of stuff, but yet we can spend $200,000? Plus, I hear the number going up and down on, on a couple of these things, I've heard various numbers, which makes me wonder. I mean, is it, are they just fishing for a certain amount, or do they really, which is why I like this process here we're talking about. If the number can change wildly from $500,000 to $50,000 to $200,000, I'm not sure.
Well, I think that, just to respond, they had an, they had an official request, the Manager and I sat down and talked to, a DOC representative, and they asked us for $500,000. I do not think the Commission will support $500,000, so in the meantime, just in informal one-on-one conversations, we've been all over the board on the number. But probably now, we need to decide, are we going to be in or out, and what level are we going to be in? I think we need to be in. City of Wichita gave them a whole lot of money. That doesn't mean we have to do anything, but it seems to be a big project with strong community support. And I don't know, I just think this government should also show support at some level. And I would be good, I mean, might as well say, I would be good to be supportive of this from anywhere from $50,000 for two years, up to $100,000 for two years. I'm pretty flexible in there, and I don't know if anyone else has a stronger opinion.
So is your, is your preference the 100 over two years, 117, 118? Because I'll support that if that's what you're wanting to do.
Are you talking about, I mean, something in 17?
Yes. Yeah, some in 17 and some in 18. Commissioner?
While you're thinking about your response, I would, let's point out the city put in 900,000 because one councilman decided to use a big chunk of the change you got from the sale of the Hyatt, okay? And I mean, if there's really a strong public support for this, then let the public support it. And we'll use our resources for things like the CAD system.
Well, and, and I think the public is supporting. They've had fundraising events, and they've been out talking to people, and, and they've, I, I don't know how much the whole project is.
Six million.
Yeah, six million, and so they're, they have a lot of private support.
I, I bet you, I bet you, we say no to this, I bet you they'll find a way to pay it. It's just my guess.
Yeah, well, they might, so.
Well, I'll put my two cents worth in.
Good, I'm, I'm, we need a couple of cents.
I think we need to support DOC to some level. My concern is, $200,000 is way beyond my some level. I understand that the City of Wichita put $900,000 in, but a couple of things that enter into that. First of all, that money was really Wichita taxpayers' money that went into that, and most of the citizens that we represent are Wichita taxpayers, so Wichita taxpayers have already paid once. I don't want to say that we're double-charging them a whole lot of money on this thing. $200,000 is, as I said, a lot more than I'm interested in. Another reason Wichita could afford to put $900,000 in is that in 50 years, that building reverts to the ownership of Wichita. So really, they bought a building that they're going to own in 50 years for $900,000. So, and if we put anything in, even if we put $900,000 in, we'd own zero of that building in 50 years. So I could, I could put $50,000 in one time, but beyond that, right now, I don't know that I could go much further than that.
What if I twisted, really, really, really twisted arms, they go 50 this year and next year? A really twisted arm.
Why don't we put 50 in this year, and then you twist my arm next year?
More stability, though, right?
Yeah.
Based on our conversations.
Conversations with who?
People from DOC?
Yeah, different ones, I've, there've been three or four different ones.
What, who? We've had a lot of them.
Who, who, what conversations?
Who have I talked to?
Conversations with Michael?
Lot of people.
Like who?
People that support DOC.
Give me some names.
I don't need to.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Norton and I have been in conversations with people.
Just thought maybe you might, well, be transparent about it, just, just ask them.
Well, their, their leadership includes guys like Lynn Nichols, and Jeff Turner, and Fred Berry, and Steve Clark, and all those guys. And I, I think every one of them has talked to me, I don't know who else, but every one of them, at some time or another, they've all talked to me. Mr. Howell, what are you thinking?
Well, thanks for asking. Commissioner Renz, I may not be happy with me on this one, but I'm actually in your camp on this one. And I've been following DOC for 15 years. I think it's important to this community. And we gave $1 million to the Chalk Advocacy Center, for example. It was the one time we had president giving one-time money to big projects in our community. I think this is one of those decisions, in my opinion, an economic development thing. This is the end of the year, after the budget's performed, we've got the money in the budget. I would have, I actually felt less comfortable about this on the front end than I do on the back end of the budget. We actually have surplus funds in the budget right now that's available. I think we can use that money for something in the community that makes, I guess, an economic development effort in our community, I think, makes sense. If you do this on the front end of the budget, we don't know if the budget's going to perform or not, it's, I mean, it's more conservative, so. Might surprise you, but I would rather do the $200,000, not 17, and do nothing next year. Just my opinion. And that would actually help our bottom line next year's. And 18, the other, 18 numbers get better, and there's money in the 17 budget to do the $200,000 this year.
Okay. All right, well, we've got one Commissioner that gives him a great deal of pain, and others are pretty pained. What, I mean, and they, they would, they need, I mean, I think in their planning, they'd rather have, I'm trying to find a place where we can get an answer, but, I mean, maybe we want to do 100 this year and that's it. What do you think?
I sure wouldn't do 200 total or in one year. If you twist my arm, I could probably come up with $100,000 this year, and then say we're done, that gives them an even million from the taxpayers.
This would have to go to 100,000.
We can do $100,000 for 17.
Yeah.
That's fine, we can talk about whatever, whatever else they want, and that's a discussion that's in the future.
All right. Lindsey, I think we have consensus that we're at 100 in 2017.
Okay, and is-
There's nothing on the board for 2018.
Okay. And for the funding agreement that you'd like drafted, is there consensus to support that stipulation that they need to remain local? And is that for some certain amount of time?
Five years.
Okay.
Say that again?
200.
That's only five years, they've got to stay local?
Well, it depends on how much they're willing to do for $100,000. I'm assuming that some point they'll block. If you want right then, I can ask them to do it.
So we're going, we're going to build a, a building that's going to belong to Wichita for $6 million, and we're going to only ask for this plan to be here five years?
I'm not advocating this, Ron.
I've got to rethink my $100,000 plan.
Let's, would you-
What's the consensus, Commissioner?
Would you please engage them and see what, what they think? I mean, we-
They might be willing to make a good deal.
I'll vote for that.
All right.
Okay. All right.
All right, next item.
Thank you, Boundless Playground. As you know, they have come back to ask for some additional recurring funding. In our discussions yesterday, Commissioners did ask how much has been provided to those folks. And so in 2016, you approved up to $9,250 for construction documents and a piece of equipment. And there's ongoing maintenance of the property. We're working on getting those estimates now for how much that actually costs. But of course, there was also the, the idea that it is on county property for the long term. So with that information, yes, please.
We've spent about $9,000 over the last seven years in hard costs on maintenance and repair for that facility, for the Boundless Playground. We don't have a calculation for the labor involved, but we spent almost $9,000 in upkeep and repair of the-
Annually?
No, total.
At one time, when I saw you all adding up costs, why, you included some road repair work that David's folks did.
And David can tell you what that was worth.
And I don't think that's even a fair thing to add to the Boundless Playground. It's fixing a road in Sedgwick County Park. That baffles me, why we would say that a road in Sedgwick County Park that gets down to a pavilion that people use, gets down to the lake, would suddenly be an expense to the Boundless Playground.
The $9,000 amount did not include any-
No, but they included like $30,000 for, for putting a road in against Boundless Playground. That's, that's not a fair addition to the, to the cost.
Is, was that a road or a parking lot? It's a road, but the road leads to the parking lot, but it also leads on to other things. Who did the parking lot?
Don't know. We didn't, we didn't do the parking lot.
Did we pay for the parking lot?
Don't recall.
Okay, well, I might be just trying to argue with David, because it seems like I thought we paid for it, but maybe I'm just-
No, this was just a recent thing, where they fixed the road out there, because it swallowed my truck hole, and I had to put it in four-wheel drive to get it out.
Okay, so, have we already approved it sometime as $30,000 for this year?
No, this was a, the 2016 funding agreement that they agreed to was the $9,250. And then there was that ongoing maintenance support, which didn't have any specific dollars tied to it. And so they have, my understanding, Commissioner Dennis, you may be able to shed some light on the details, but my understanding is they have come back and asked for a recurring request of $30,000 per year. And thus far, I know we heard about it, I think, at a staff meeting, but I don't believe that it's been an agenda item for you.
But we did fund that swing, right?
That's the $9,000.
Is that the $9,000?
The, the $9,250 included, actually, the bulk of the cost was for the design of the construction documents, and then I think it was up to $1750 for the swing.
Okay.
We're committed to the, for the maintenance of this already, that's not part of this $30,000.
Yes, right.
This is for improvements to the park.
Yes, sir.
I know, and we're not even know what for sure this is going to be, it's, in other words, it's a-
It's like a campaign.
Yeah, they've got a plan, they've drawn up.
Yeah, but we did several things last year in response to your request, and they said if we did those things, they would raise the rest of the budget. I can't remember-
That was those two items that we did in 2016, that, that we paid for some architectural drawings, and then we paid for a swing.
We gave them some sand, and we did something else.
There was some grant writing assistance that we gave, but that wasn't monetary.
Several things, and I think we did almost all of them. But we did something this year.
I don't know that it was related to the Boundless Playground, there have been a couple of park things that have come up, but-
Oh, okay, okay, anyway.
We, we said we'd do the ongoing maintenance, we helped with the plans, and we bought the, the swing. And we said that going forward, we'd make sure that the maintenance was taken care of. We did not make a commitment beyond that, so this is in addition to.
Yes, sir.
You could look at this as a request to support their capital campaign. They, when they came and made those asks in 2016, and we agreed to the swing and the, the architectural drawing, their intent was to do a capital campaign to fund the rest of the project. I think this $30,000 is a request to support that capital campaign.
For how long? Because it says recurring.
I think that's their request.
Forever?
I don't recall a time limit in their request.
Well, you remember last year, when they came to us, they asked for us for a line item for, and I think this is what they think that line item's for. So it's recurring, but it looks like Tim says, it's based off of their campaign.
But they wanted a line item in our budget specific to that campaign.
I, I, I would support it for one year.
I would support it for one year, but not recurring.
I'd give them $30,000 for one year, and then we'll see what happens in the future.
Sure.
And that would be down to the 2017 line, and scratch the 2018?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does that create, create an expectation for the future?
I think if we tell them it's one time, we can at least try to mitigate that.
Okay.
So you're advocating for $30,000 out of the 17 budget?
Right.
That's what I hear, is one-time $30,000 commitment.
Other than this campaign, we don't know what that, we don't know specifically what that money's for.
I can get you the plans, they've got a huge set of plans that are drawn up.
Yeah, we told them, I mean, honestly, to be fair, we told them last year was that was a one-time thing. So they need to understand that this is a one-time thing.
This time it really isn't.
Yeah.
Is there going to be a funding agreement for this $30,000?
Otherwise, we'd have to, I mean, we'd need to put it in the, in the budget process.
Can we make that like, it's in the contract, so it's very clear?
Yes.
This is one time?
And David will tell them?
We will bring, oh, I apologize. We'll bring a funding agreement to you, and we can specify in that this is a one-time allocation.
Can someone also estimate, what's our total dollar commitment or investment to this Boundless Playground so far? We've, we've given them land, we've given them some equipment, we've given them a number of things, and so how much are we into this so far? I mean, we have a long-term commitment already, I'd like to know how much we've already given, and what's our future commitment in terms of maintenance? I think we ought to know those numbers, we don't know what we're doing right now.
We did a write-up on that earlier this year, but I unfortunately don't have it with me, I don't think. So I'll put that together, and we can send you a note later today, or send the Commissioners a note.
Because I don't want, I don't want us to feel like we're not doing something. We're doing, we've done a lot already, and we want to see and understand that, and not forget what's been, happened, what's happened already.
But while you're putting numbers together, the attendance there has increased to over a million a year, from what I understand, at the, in Sedgwick County Park. And this is a major area that attracted those million people a, a year. So I think if we're looking at numbers, we need to see what we're paying for all of Sedgwick County Park totally, what portion of that is going to the Boundless Playground, and what the impact on that Boundless Playground is to, to the overall attendance at Sedgwick County Park. Otherwise, we can't make really good decisions. So I understand your, your request for additional information, but I think even more additional information is required to make a good decision.
We'll work with Tim and the folks at the park to try and put together some of those.
It's a well-used feature of the park. It's really hard to be discreet about what features a guest, a park, guest, park and guest uses when they come. We don't have any way to say that people used the Boundless Playground versus using the walking paths or one of the, the-
Art park.
The art park or anything else. It's really hard to be discreet on what people use, but I can tell you that the Boundless Playground is a well-used feature in the park.
But being indiscreet, it more than doubled. The numbers out there, I thought that Mark came and showed us that one time.
I, I think that there are, you could say that it's dramatically increased the attendance. The increase, the attendance increased dramatically after the, that feature was added.
Okay.
Correlation causation, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Tim should have been a lawyer.
All right, here we go, let's keep-
Okay. Sports Commission, $5,000, that's already been paid for 2017. Whether or not this continues to be a membership that the, or a support that the Commission gives is a question, and whether then also we ought to add it into the 2019 budget going forward. Um, and whether then also we ought to add it into the 2019 budget going forward.
Okay, I support it. A five thousand dollar revenue going forward, so.
Okay.
Is it in eighteen budget currently?
No.
It's not?
That's why it's made it to this list, actually. It's because we need to have kind of that discussion about whether it's that ad hoc request or not.
I'm not against this type of funding, but I do think that these are the type of requests ought to go to commissioners because this is a, it's a, we're not buying something, we're not getting a service necessarily. We're providing funding to an organization. It's tax dollars going out. We ought to have commissioners out, ought to approve these types of expenditures. And I don't think that actually happened last year. I don't have, I don't have a five thousand dollars was given out other than maybe manager's decision or whatever, but I think the, you know, we're talking about funding, funding for outside stuff. It's not a product or a service. I think we ought to have commissioners out, out to weigh in on that, especially if it's implied that this can, you know, gonna be continuous funding going forward. So we ought to have a-
And I thought we did.
We did.
We did not talk about that?
Talked about what? This wasn't in last, this wasn't in last year's budget. This was a five thousand dollars ask at the beginning of this year in which we got consensus for doing it this year. But the reason we, why we've put it in this is because we need to have that conversation. Is this an ongoing, uh, ask or, you know, request that we're gonna support or not? And then we'll definitely have it in the budget process for 2019 next year. Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
I didn't want to lose track of it, that's why it's here.
So there's consensus to pay it in 2018 and then to build it into the nineteen budget. Okay.
Or it can come back if that's what commissioner Hall wants, I mean, that, that I do support it.
So, and I guess my point is, I don't know if we do have a conversation or there was consensus, you said, to do this. Man, you, you walked the halls and got consensus on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, why, why are we doing this? Wait, do they really need it? That's what I thought. Okay.
I would say they would need it. I mean, just in the fact that the sports commission was involved in getting, uh, the NCAA tournaments to interest Bank Arena. They were a large part of that lobbying effort. If you look at the five thousand dollars cost, uh, over the, the life of, 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 of them getting two NCAA championships.
If we don't get it, something bad will happen. This really isn't bound deep. This is about, we all know what it's about. They don't need it, I mean.
Okay, well. They're a good partner in the community and they've proven their value, I think, and, um, this is a pulpy amount.
They've been able to get a large amount of prior sector support and I think we should encourage that and if they don't need it, then we should be willing to say, well, you go get it. It may be a pulpy amount, but to them, but, I mean, it's reflected within overall problem as well, but nevertheless.
Okay, just. Okay, well, I think there's consensus to go ahead. So, next item.
Okay, the next item is the project access increase. We do have one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, for the allocation in the 2018 budget that was adopted. And they have come back and asked for an additional twenty-five thousand and Tim and his folks will come and present the annual, uh, request to you, um, with this in it and we can have some additional details for that discussion at that time. Um, at this point, we just wanted to make you aware of that request.
And this is coming, um, partly because of Wichita?
Uh, my understanding is that the city of Wichita has said that they will increase their, um, contribution as well to two hundred thousand. But that's, I think that's information that we can ask, um, our, uh, department folks to bring to you when this item comes for discussion, so we can have all those details ready for you then, if that's okay.
They already did in their twenty-eighteen budget of the city of Wichita.
Oh, I don't know about that part.
The budget that just, because they updated back to where it was before.
Okay.
So you wanna know if there's support to go ahead with this or you?
Well, I think, um, for this one, it's more flagging it for you because there will be a funding agreement that comes to you for, for that and there can be some additional debate then. I think that's probably better to have that discussion and then now if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, One Life is something that was already paid again. This was a comprehensive list of everything that was, uh, requested through the budget or outside of the budget process this year. NACO is another one.
What was One Life?
I believe it was a conference.
It was a suicide prevention motivational speaker for teens. That, this was funded through Calm Care. The request came through and then we funded it through Calm Care Admin. And got tickets for kids that were in services that went to that conference.
I remember it would be a brief on that. I'm not sure how that happened. Who got the, who got the request?
I got the request and I was asked, uh, I got it from a commissioner.
What commissioner?
I got the request through, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Oh, I see, okay, thanks.
Thank you for fulfilling that, guys. It was important and the mayor of Wichita sends his thanks as well.
Oh, so the mayor asked you to do something, you jumped right on it. Got it. Okay.
He's my friend.
He's your friend. I understand he's your friend. So that means you can help him out with money.
Good community here.
Yes, it's a good, it was a good project and we had resources. Okay, here we go, keep-
National Association of Counties. Um, this is a membership that we've, uh, had some years and not other years. We haven't yet been invoiced for 2017, but we expect we will be. And so whether or not there's support to pay that invoice when it comes in, it's not necessarily anything that would require a funding agreement, but whether or not we have authorization to pay it when it does come in. And then if we wanna build it into your operating budget going forward.
We didn't pay NACO for 2017?
Uh, they invoice in December, so we haven't gotten it yet for this year.
But there was decisions to do that already.
Yeah.
Sedgwick County attended the conference probably earlier in the year.
Yeah, we already voted on 2017 membership.
I guess I'm surprised it's not in eighteen budget.
It, it's in the eighteen budget, isn't it?
Uh, I didn't see it, but I would defer to Lisa if she knows that it is. Okay, I apologize then. This should be off.
Okay.
Um, the Chisholm Trail Celebration was a two thousand dollar, um, support for the Delano Fall Fest, um, which was one time and has been paid. River Fest this year was a fifteen thousand dollar allocation. It has been built into the 2018 budget. Um, Senior Centers, this request is slightly different than when we talked before. Um, I think in the last couple of discussions, we've heard seventy-three thousand, uh, but we've since heard that, uh, there's another senior center out there that could, uh, potentially be moved to another level, which would give them an additional twenty-two thousand dollars. And so, um, this has been tabled indefinitely based on discussion, uh, at our last funding workshop, um, for not, but the request is ninety-five thousand dollars. And at this point, I think staff is looking for maybe some direction or consensus about where you would like us to take the next steps if there's, um, either another look at the funding formula or, uh, anything else you might expect.
I, um, I, I thought we had, we had come to the conclusion that, um, the categories and the, and the description of the funding formula were good. And if it looked like we had resources to fund them and, to fully fund changes, we would, but so far, we haven't, um, got that recommendation. I don't think we made it, so.
Okay.
My only, my only comment on that would be, you know, we're funding a lot of stuff on this discussion today because it's perceived we've got money in the budget to do those things. These are last-minute asks by a number of organizations that were not planned or not budgeted. This senior center funding is something that was agreed to a long time ago and they have kept their side of the agreement. So if we're not gonna fund this, we ought to change the agreement. That's my opinion. I, I don't wanna change the agreement and we should fund it. That's just me. But, but to say we don't have the money is disingenuous to the fact that we're spending two hundred thousand dollars on dock, a hundred thousand dollars on dock, fifteen thousand dollars on River Fest, five thousand dollars on sports commission and all that goes. Those are all discretionary decisions based on the fact we have the money. So how do you come back and say we don't have the money for senior centers when clearly we have money for other things?
I, it's different. Go ahead, Richard.
I think it's different, yeah. I, I, I think we're already spending more than enough on senior centers. I think we do need to change the formula. When you look at all the stuff we're, we're spending money on, I think a disproportionate amount goes to senior centers. And I would not increase the amount on senior centers, period. If we need to reallocate it within, it just makes good sense. Now, I've not supported some of this other spending, but this is a recurring thing. If you look within, it's just, we have priorities that we're spending a lot less money on. It's disproportionate and it's become politicized. I understand that, but it's just, I don't think it would be good to increase this amount, this reallocation. I also think we need to look at lowering some of our, I mean, we mandate at a certain level that they have full-time employees. If we would reduce that mandate, then they could reduce s, s, some of their expenses and, and spend it a little differently and, and add in, you know, some of the reasons people wanted. I think they're doing fine at the level of that anyway, so I, I think we, this is a bigger issue than just the senior center, I think.
I agree, it's a bigger issue. I, this is like number fifteen out of fifteen priorities, uh, and it receives the bulk of the, of the funding. So I, I truly believe that we need to redo our agreement to, uh, to reflect what we, you know, really think that, uh, we ought to be funding for senior centers.
Well, I think we, did we receive it the first of the year, uh, se, several options?
Yes, sir.
We, we might need to revisit that and we might need to look at a, some formula that says, okay, this is the pot of money. How is it distributed? You know, and saying that's the maximum amount of money that, that we're gonna allocate for senior centers, at least at this time. So I don't know if it's on a per cap basis and, and we reduce some of the personnel requirements or something, but I, I don't, I don't have support. I don't, I don't wanna support giving them any more money at this time and, um, so, so maybe we ought to just ask you to take another stab at a different funding formula.
No, we, if we're gonna do anything with funding, if you recall recently, uh, the Aging Board, uh, took six or seven thousand dollars out of disabilities.
Yeah.
Is this on down?
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
But, but I, I actually agree with Commissioner Hall and I wish we could, but I know how to count, so I'm not gonna belabor that and I'll just move on, so.
But, uh, you know-
We have two to three, uh, to fund it additionally, so we can just move on to the next thing.
And so, I, just for the consensus, it is not necessarily to give funding in seventeen or eighteen, but to come back through the 2019 budget process with potentially a different agreement. Is that correct?
That's what I, so I'm gonna move on right now.
You know, if you're- For plane nineteen, we need a different funding.
If you remember, uh, Tim briefed us a couple of months ago, we, he briefed a multiple different options. It sounds like now there is a consensus on one of those options. So we'll go back and, and Tim will go back and, and, and fix that and bring that back to you for a vote.
Consensus on what, what, what are the options?
Well, it sounds like the, there is a majority of the commissioners that wanted a fixed amount or a, a formula to get rid of the formula and provide a fixed amount for an amount. There, it seems like there's consensus there to do something along those lines. Instead of giving it based off of a formula, just give it based off a fixed amount.
What are the options? And that consensus is, that was, we discussed that heat, that detail where, at the workshop?
We had a workshop here where Tim talked for about an hour on that, presented the different options, and that was one of the options.
One of the options would be to freeze the allocations where they're at right now and do away with the funding formula that we have in place and we, you have a choice on how we would allocate those, that amount of money. One would be to leave it where it's at, so no existing providers are harmed. Another would be to look at either, um, population base or membership base, or we've got a number of different formulas that you can do. The important, uh, as, as we've talked about this over the past couple of years, one of the issues is what's the right amount of money to allocate to senior centers? And the other question is, what's, how do we allocate that money? And so I think we've struggled with both of those questions, but if there is consensus that we're gonna allocate the current amount, then we can work on how we, that, that's the maximum. Then we can figure out if there's a different option for you that you would prefer and how we distribute the money.
Yeah, you may still need a formula within that amount, but you also may need a change to where each level has a range, a po, a range. Like, at this level, you'll get between twenty to thirty-five and then you let the advisory committee kinda hash it out based on, because there are so many factors and you, you gave us options on it and, and based on population versus attendance, you can see how it'd be fair, unfair, and it, and it, it's not, it's not ea, if it was easy, we, we'd solve it. So there has to be, I think, some leeway in there and some understanding that it may change from year to year.
I mean, you can have a distribution formula, but it's based off a fixed amount.
Right.
Like you're saying, but you can't have a distribution formula. In this case, we're using a formula to justify the allocation of giving either more or less based off of the input to that formula.
In theory, well, it was tied to a mill levy, you know, performance-based budgeting, which I think a lot of us agree with, so. The intended of senior funding is to keep people in their homes and independent and so they don't become burdens of government other ways. And I, you know, if they're doing a good job with that, you know, neck to the dogs, theoretically, they're saving tax dollars elsewhere, but, um, those other, those other formulas, the population-based and attendance-based, those were, those were flawed formulas. I think, you know, freezing this is one discussion, but I don't know if we actually had a consensus on what to do on that.
Oh, we absolutely did not.
There was no consensus.
There was no, there was no consensus on what kind of allocation.
That's my point exactly, no consensus. And so, in terms of making a direction, the only consensus I hear right now, three of them, are saying not to do anything in terms of seventeen or eighteen funding. That's not a consensus at all so far. Everything else went after that.
No, we're saying to freeze funding at a certain level.
Yes. I, I've heard three freeze fundings at a certain level.
Okay.
Current budgeted amount.
Okay, well, let's, I, I think you understand, we want you to come back with, uh, different plans, so let's keep moving.
Okay. The next is the Community Health Assessment Position Restoration or Replacement, and I understand that that will be coming up for discussion, um, soon. So, uh, for purposes of today, I'm just gonna move right on down the list. Uh, so the dewatering project is something we have already paid for, um, out of the commission's fund center. ICM, um, you did hear from them earlier this year on their plans to put the, uh, plant out near Colwich. Um, I think it's still on the radar. Uh, we're still waiting for information, but as the manager pointed out earlier, we do need to know if there's, um, the, the support to move quickly with this. If, if we do get what we need from them, the commitments to funding and water and all of those types of things.
Tom, have you got any update?
No, not since we talked to them last.
Well, at some point, we're gonna have to say that this is gonna have to move to 2019. And they're gonna have to decide whether or not they're gonna move ahead with the project or not.
The last that we had talked to him, he, they were, it was a combination of finance and water rights issues there. They have their finances worked out, but their water rights issues, they didn't think they'd get resolution to until first quarter 2018. They know from our end that it's a three hundred and sixty-five day project to get the roads to where they want them to be, so.
So in that case, we can move this to 2019 right now?
That's what it's looking like, yes.
Is that okay with you?
As soon as we're given the word, it'll be at least, I mean, it'll be about one year. That's as fast as we could do it.
It's a question of when we would have to pay for that. It would be, the project could be up and running. We could actually be doing the work in 2018. I mean, I'd be completed to it.
Yeah, I wouldn't take it out of the 2018 right now.
But at some point, we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
So, and we need to make that clear to them out there that they're gonna have to tell us what was going on or, because they do have an alternative. They can still come down into Colwich and go across.
Yes.
Colwich doesn't want that. That's why we're building a million-dollar road going across. But, uh, it won't stop the operation of the plant one way or the other.
That's correct, right.
Yeah, right now, that road would be, would have been paid in 2017, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, but out of bu, budget savings from multiple projects. So that's exactly what would happen for 2018. So if they came to us a year later after it was supposed to start in, say, April, um, then we would do the same thing. We would figure out through budget savings if, if we could fund it, you know, from, from our, our current budget for 2018.
We can't set aside the saving from this year, carry that forward or?
We could.
Yeah, it's out of sales tax, so it can go into the sales tax carryover.
Well, do, do we not wanna at least, why, why, why would we not wanna at least set that aside and then if we end up not doing it, then it goes away, I, I mean?
I, that's why I don't wanna push it to a 2019. It's a 2018, um, and I, I believe we could have that same savings to be able to use for it. So my desire is just to keep it in the 2018 and we'll figure it out.
So it'll be fine, it won't hurt the budget then, regardless?
No.
Regardless, you can do it out of here, okay.
My biggest worry is we've got a million dollars up there and that puts the seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in the hole.
Well, this is sales tax money too for roads, I mean, this has a specific use.
Different funding source.
This would assume, in this one, it would assume that there's that cash transfer from the general fund, in case there aren't the budgetary savings in 2018 that we thought we could have in 2017.
She's just being extra prudent, but we'll find it within.
Well, I just worry about that red at the bottom.
Yeah. There wouldn't be red if you didn't have that.
That is true.
Okay.
Okay.
That's probably true.
So, just for consensus, I believe to leave it in for now. Okay. So USS Wichita, the ask is twenty-five thousand dollars for this year. This is another one where we would want to come back with a funding agreement for you, and so I guess trying to understand if there's consensus to bring this to you this year or not.
Well, the biggest thing is that Wichita has to do something first before the work, you know, it's named USS Wichita, not USS Sedgway County. So if, if Wichita does something, I think we need to be good partners and do something with Wichita, but until Wichita does something, I don't want to say that we're going to lead the way on this thing, so, you know, if it's not going to happen in 2017 with the current budget, we need to figure out how we could do it in 2018 or not do it at all if Wichita can't fund their portion of it. I don't, I don't want to lead, I want to follow whatever lead that Wichita gives.
Okay.
So I think the best score, we can take it out of 2017 and put it as a question for 2018.
Right.
Okay. What's, what's the deadline for us, or when is this?
They're going to commission it about this time next year, probably down in Mayport, Florida.
Wichita knew about this when they passed their eighteen budget, right? They didn't plan to?
I don't think.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I don't know, I don't know.
So they increased the funding for project access?
Yeah, I don't know about USS Wichita, whether they need that or not.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
All right, the Aviation Museum, we understand that there is a fifty thousand dollar recurring ask starting in 2018. This number has moved around a bit, but this is the latest greatest information we have.
See, do, do we have, are we funding the Aviation Museum ten thousand dollars this year?
That, not yet, that would be a discussion. That was the ask, was initially was ten thousand and then twenty-five thousand recurring, but that, we have since heard that that's fifty thousand recurring, starting in 2018. And so I guess whether there's the ten thousand dollars support in 2017 or the fifty thousand dollar recurring support in 2018, or have them come back through the 2019 budget process, or a mixture of those three options are what we have for your consideration.
Air Museum and Doc Needham Bridge.
Well, the Air Museum has over two million artifacts that reflect the heritage of aviation in Wichita. It's the only place in Wichita that we have any kind of presence that shows the history of aviation in Wichita. Building is fantastic, it's in the absolute wrong location, but it's something that's an asset to, to this area. Now, I don't want to see us, truly, I'd like to see something like thirty thousand one time and tell them we're happy, we, we want to support them, but the other advantage, if we could give them something in 2017, they do have someone that's offered a fifty thousand dollar matching, so if we could come up with any part of that fifty thousand matching, it would actually double whatever we give. So my suggestion is we give them a one-time shot of thirty thousand dollars and take it off the recurring. If they want to submit something later on and we think it's good, we can think about it, but right now, I'm not in favor of anything beyond that.
Okay. Is there any, I guess, consensus to support that or object to it?
I think we should go to the buzzer box, that's all right.
Okay.
This is Wichita, we're asking Linkin Towne, Art Museum, Kight Towne. They don't support expression plays or other anything. I guess I see this as, there's, there's different venues that we support and different ones that they support. I guess I don't see this as our thing, so I don't, I, I like the museum, but I don't think this is our, our issue, so I don't support.
I don't, I don't think there's any support right now.
Okay. All right, the Art Park, this is actually an agreement that has already been entered into by the Commission, and I did have a chance to talk with Tim yesterday after, or walking the halls with you all, and that is that the term does limit the maximum amount of spend to fifty thousand dollars, and they, the Arts Council has committed to reimbursing the county for any portion of that. So it did come up outside of the budget process, but there shouldn't be a real fiscal impact to the county, and the Commission has already voted on it, but I did just want to follow up since we did get that additional information, and I don't know if Tim has anything he'd like to add.
The only thing I'd add is that we'll receive, it will take probably another, it will probably be completed in January, and then upon completion, the Arts Council will reimburse us for what we expend on it, up to fifty thousand dollars, so it'll be fully funded through that agreement that you, you signed a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
The next item then is the Cerebral Palsy Research Foundation. They have made an ask for seventy-six hundred dollars on a recurring basis, starting in 2018, and I guess the, the question is, is there support for this, and is there support for it out of the general fund? I know there have been some other options other commissioners have floated, so.
I strongly support that we at least fund them, that seventy-six hundred dollars in 2018. They can make their request through the Aging Council going forward, but they, they got cut, my understanding from talking to Pat Jonas is that they got cut because they hadn't spent all, spent all their money from the year before, but there was an accounting switch because they were asked to redo their, do their accounting differently, and so they have an overwhelming need for this program, and this was a little bit of a surprise, and so I would recommend that we keep them whole, this is amounts they were reduced. I'd recommend we keep them whole this year and then have them go back through the process, process for ongoing years.
Sounds great.
I think they were reduced and that money was given to another entity, I think going forward, that it should be drawn back, as it never should have been given to, that other entity gets lots of money from us from a lot of things. I have to, I would tell that entity, we're going to go back to what we were before personally, going forward.
Hopefully, that will be fixed in the future, because now, I understand, we've got someone with disabilities on Aging Council that can advocate for them, so I, I support giving it back to them one time and, and have an Aging Council do their job in the future.
Yeah, and they had to consider whether they brought back from that other, it was also a good program. I mean, it was giving meals to people in, in wheelchairs, so it's similar, but the Cerebral Palsy Research Foundation, I think, has a specific need.
Yeah.
It's going to hurt, we need help.
Yes.
Okay.
So the way this would likely look is that in the 2019 budget process, a decision package for seventy-six hundred dollars, and then what we've historically done is used the Advisory Council for guidance on how that money is allocated, and so this, this change is based on an allocation recommendation from the Advisory Council based on the amount of.
Right.
Funding that was approved for the 2018 budget, which will, if there's support, be increased by seventy-six hundred dollars, and then we'd ask for that in a decision package for nineteen.
Okay.
And any other additional requests that may come through the process that we go through.
Okay. I think we're all good.
The next item is something that came to us through the County Manager's Office, a request for sponsorship for the WSU Center for Combatting Human Trafficking Conference. We have historically sent staff to this, I think we had nine go to the last conference. Through the sponsorship, we would actually get eight entries, and so it, it seems fairly straightforward, but because it did come through the Manager's Office, this would require some consensus from commissioners to move this forward.
How much would it cost to send nine?
Brent, do you remember that?
Pardon?
Do you remember how much it costs to send those nine people?
It's a hundred and fifteen dollars per registration.
So roughly a thousand dollars.
Boom. What did it affect them?
Because of the way it came to us, and this is a sponsorship rather than just buying entry fees, which is what we've done historically. So since it is a sponsorship, it's a little bit of a different thing. Next time, we'll, we'll tell them not to come through the Manager's Office.
I'd, I'd be supportive of this one time.
Okay. Any objection? I think that's easier at this point, okay. The final one is SKED, they are coming to talk to you at an, or at a BOCC business meeting on the thirteenth, will have a funding agreement attached. We have relayed to them that at this point, the funding will take, carry them through June thirtieth of 2018, but then they'll need to come back with some information, deliverables, data and outcomes to be funded going forward, and so just make sure we're laying that information back to you, and that way, when they do come on the thirteenth, if you have any expectations or requests you'd like to make of them, then that would be a good time. So with that said, our ending numbers then still show us with a positive operating surplus in 2017 of about five hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars projected, and with a potential deficit of three hundred seventy-five thousand in 2018, mostly related to that ICM one million dollars. And to the extent that amount comes down, that will put us back more closely to where we started at the top of the sheet, with an operating surplus in 2018, because it would eat up most of that seven hundred thousand dollars of unanticipated expense we've already forecasted.
My cup is half full, it's still a surplus of about seven hundred and thirty thousand, so.
You're going to send us this?
Absolutely, be happy to.
Okay, any more comment? Okay, Lindsey, thank you.
The next part then is Brent, to talk about how this process will look going forward.
As we went through the process of looking at some of these various funding requests, we came up with what we hope is a good solution going forward that achieve, hopes to achieve four different objectives. And you've got a couple of handouts on there. The first one that I'll be referencing is the one that's titled Economic and Community Development Funding Requests. Basically, what we're going to try to do in the proposed process is to make sure that we have a level playing field for all these various requests that come in and that we're perceived as having a level playing field for all of these requests. I don't know that that's a problem today, but we want to make sure that it is as open and transparent as possible and everyone's being treated fairly inequitably that's, that is filling out an application for the request. To the extent that we can plan the expenditures in the budget process, that's what we hope to do. We realize that there may be some, as Commissioner Howell referenced earlier, that might come on the tail end of the process, but to the extent possible, we would put them through the budget process. We would look at these requests and analyze them to make sure that they are in alignment with the county strategic plan. It may be a wonderful program, a wonderful expenditure, but it's not the business we're in, so maybe it falls off. So we want to make sure that we do align with the strategic plan. And fourth, it says practice principal stewardship. Basically, that is, does this make sense? Is this expenditure a good investment of county resources? Is it being done efficiently? Is it an effective program or an effective use of county resources? So what we propose going forward for a process is that if you look at that second sheet that's titled Sedgway County Community Development Funding Request, that's a depiction of an electronic form that's been developed, that if somebody asks us for money through the process, we email them the form and everybody fills out basically the same set of questions. We want to know who they are, how much money do they want, one time, recurring, what are they going to use the money for? How do they measure success? What does that look like to them? And then we'll take that information and put it through our vetting process to see if we meet those objectives at the top. How we would do that is through a committee, a review committee that would be comprised of the Deputy County Manager, the Assistant County Managers, our Budget Director and myself. We'll analyze these to see, do they line up with the strategic plan? Do we think they make sense? Make those recommendations to the manager for his submission to you for a budget and your final decision on those funding requests. So basically, it's taking a more holistic view rather than, here's a request, here's a request, here's a request, and we're taking one offs. It's more giving you a holistic view of these external funding requests.
Okay, thank you, Brent. If we, if we, the Commissioners should have a constituent or citizen come up and say, hey, we really think you need to support this, we need to direct them to you, is that the?
That's right, and then we'll get them started in the process.
Okay.
And unless we hear otherwise, it'd be part of the next budget cycle.
So I have a couple of questions. So on these question, questionnaires, it said, what other funding tools are available, both public and private? Are they going to list, because the next one is, what's the annual budget? What I'm getting, I had some people in the private sector who are in the nonprofit, that suggest that when we give money nonprofits, one of the things we should look at is what portion of their money is already, is taxpayer funded.
Okay.
And I guess, I'm not sure if that's exactly what you're getting at, it's pretty, I, I, you know, if, if an organization is funded by the taxpayer, now you can't, they would suggest that that's too far, you know, too much. I mean, if an organization is funded ten percent by taxpayers, that's, that's better. Their argument is that they, and this is a nonprofit, you're local saying, you know, diversify, they need to make their appeal to the private sector, that's the way to do it, and I think I agree with that. I don't know what the right, you know, right amount is, I don't know if there's anything out there that's available, guidance for, for governments, but I think that would be good for us to know for total budget, what, what percentage is private sector. So I'd like to see numbers, I guess.
Sure, and that's one of the things that they could cut and paste a financial statement right into this form or attach it as well, so, but I think we can tweak that question with the money.
As long as they understand, we want to be able to see what that is. And then my, my second question is, I, I understand the objectives, you know, is it good, does it have community service? To me, another question is, do we really need to be funding this to begin with, or should this be done by the private sector, period, okay? Because the problem is, I mean, we, we get all sorts of requests, some of them are, some of them are variety of things, and then I get, you know, we had a discussion a few years back when we kept the Arts Council, you know, there are people in the private sector compete with variety of arts things that we support, and they say, hey, it's not fair, I don't get any funding, they, you know, and there's lots of people that could come and ask for money, I'm just using the arts as, as example, and how do we differentiate who gets money and who doesn't? It seems to be more have to do with friends and political connections, all this sort of thing. But I think the real question is, should we really be doing this? And it would be nice if we would, I guess it probably will never happen, but, I mean, one arts person we say no to, the other we say yes to, you know, how do I tell people, well, sorry, I mean, you understand that the issue we're getting at, I mean, you could have lots of things that come up that are, that are good and they help the community and, this, you take your problem back, I think we need to keep that in mind, and I don't know if we ever reached a consensus, but.
Well, what, you know, really, what we're going for is just developing a process, because we didn't have a process before, so this at least establishes that, the procedure to how, how you make a request, it gives us analysis and scrutiny, gives it a template that wants that. It gives us analysis and scrutiny, gives it a template that once that board meets, if you've noticed, Brent has been sending you basically kind of templated analysis based off of, you know, the questions that have been asked to these different groups. So you'll start getting those more in the future, and we haven't ever been doing it before. And Brent is now, is kind of charged, and the economic development, and Shirdell is here now on board, working upstairs underneath Brent, and they make an economic development team. But, but still, this, this established a process that we didn't have before. We can tweak it as we go along. As you get the next one, there may be a way we can add a question or take away a question based off of if it's scratching your itch or not, but right now, we haven't had this before, so.
No, no, I think it's a big step right direction, but when I heard your presentation, the things you're going to be looking at are the good in the community, and I didn't know what all you said, you know. And I think the problem is, you're going to end up with saying, I think the answer may be yes to a lot of things. It doesn't necessarily mean we still want to contribute money. I mean, what we just went through here today was, was a lot of things that you make our part are good for the community, but we didn't say yes or no to all of them, you know what I'm saying? So, and.
But this gives you more information to be able to make that, that determination, to gain consensus on an item.
And these, these questions about, you know, philosophical questions about whether we should even be doing it, then they can be also asked in our discussion, but this gets us a starting point that gives us some evaluation, so.
I, I think we're almost there. Your fairness point, your first point is, should we even been doing it is the fourth bullet? Should we even be doing it? Is it something the county should be in the business of doing? The fairness and equity point that you brought up is the first bullet. The third bullet that you brought up that we don't have considered in here is, are we competing with private business, which I think is salient, and we need to probably add that in here to some degree, because if we're competing against what private industry is doing, we need to take a hard look at that. So we can add that to this list, too, and it gets us closer to where we need to be.
I think this is a pretty, I think this is a pretty good list, but I think when the reviewers do their job and the manager gets the information, moles it over, are we going to hear recommendations that we think we should support this, or maybe I think we should not support this? Are those ones that are not one that you recommend for support?
Well, if you've.
Does it come to the BOCC for us to know that that happened?
Well, if you've noticed, Brent has put in a recommendation on there. You know, there are different items on this list where we had put an amount in there, but honestly, just like today, it's, it's really, you know, the commissioners are going to be given a, an amount of time to be able to review, analyze, understand, and that, that number's going to go up or down based off of, it really, the, the number's going to solidify when you come back together like we did today and actually talk through it and, and, but, but we'll definitely give you a recommendation, and Brent has.
Let's say that you're kind of cold on the idea, and you don't think we should do this, or not money available, whatever the reason is, are we going to still hear about it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So commissioners have an influence on the recommendation that you made?
The commissioners always have an influence on the recommendation I made.
We'll get the final say.
See, that's the problem.
We'll, we'll get the final say. If we disagree with the recommendation, we say no.
The recommendation made out of the committee.
Okay, I mean, I'm.
I think the proper answer should be no.
What should, the answer to what question?
They're going to come together and the way all these things, they make a recommendation, it shouldn't already be determined because the commissioner tells them to say yes. They should have the flexibility to say no, and then if we want to say yes to something they recommend, no, that's what I'm getting at. Otherwise, otherwise it's, it's just a smokescreen, okay? If you're going to do whatever the commissioner tells you to do, anyway, you have time, because, you know, we know what the predetermined outcome is, then I don't want to waste your time, but.
Well, my, my concept of this is you, whether your recommendation through staff is positive or negative, we still have an opportunity to say whether we have supported or don't support. We could take your no and make it yes, or you take your no.
This is kind of like Bitboard.
Yes, whatever.
And they bring Bitboard to us.
Well, I give a.
That's what my question was about. I want to make sure that's the case.
I give a perfect example, you know, in the doc recommendation. What was your recommendation on that, Brent?
Maybe, I don't remember if it was ten or twenty.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, maybe.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. And what you voted on today was a hundred thousand. So, I mean, there's, there's, it gives the commissioners a chance. You, you have it based off of, you know, our reasoned analysis, but, but in the end, it comes down to a BOCC decision.
I know, see, that, that's exactly my point. So in the end, all of this doesn't matter. It really is about friends and relationships and all this other stuff, and so it is inherently unfair to anyone else who might want to make a request. There lies the problem. I don't know how to solve that, but that's my concern as we move forward.
Well, I personally think that this process looks pretty good, and that analysis looks pretty good, and that's what we're commissioners for, is because we're going to make, we're going to make those types of decisions. Okay, thank you, Brent. Anything else?
We have one more topic. It shouldn't be as long. Tavis is speaking, so. I know Tavis loves the limelight, so he may, he may take this another hour.
While he's getting set up, commissioners, we discussed early in the year that we were moving away from a fire contract, and so we're trying to implement the personnel management of, of fire staff and firefighters into a general county oversight. So what Tavis, what Chief Leek is going to talk about today is that process and progress that we made. We've been working on it throughout the year, and we're getting now to the end of the year, and at the first of 2018, we are, no longer have a, a fire contract, so they, we have to take care of these employees through general government. So, chief?
All right, good morning, commissioners. I'll be brief. I have a short PowerPoint that's going to reference the union articles crosswalking into policies. Get this to go. Okay. And December two thousand sixteen, the BLCC voted to remove basically the union from up under peer. Earlier this year, February two thousand seventeen, we met to discuss the transition plan, how will we crosswalk those articles in the policies for the fire district. We would determine also which ones that would go across, and we would determine a communication plan as well. So the remainder of two seventeen, various planning meetings were met to meet the deadline. The fire division will remain on their current step plan. Their step movement is frozen right now, and that will continue to be frozen. All fire division employees will be treated equitably with other Sedgway County employees. We reviewed the promotional process. We also included legal and HR in that review, and we also looked at our fit for duty, our health and wellness, and our physical examination. I know it looks like it's all, it's all under one policy, but they're different functions, but it was easier to just keep them under one SOP. Okay. We found that there were two actual articles that did not cross over, and so the first one is arbitration procedure from Article thirty-nine. Basically, they will follow the grievance process. They will not have the arbitration anymore, and that's like every other Sedgway County employee. The second bullet is, employees who terminate in their first six months of employment will not be paid out his or her accrual of vacation balance. This was not addressed in the contract, but we're going to follow all Sedgway County employees. Nine county policies were edited to reflect the items contained in the union contract. One new SOP was created, that was the grievance, one point ten point three, and twenty SOPs were updated to reflect the language from the union contract. So basically, all of our SOPs will not have that union language harmony, but they did transfer over. Throughout the year of two thousand seventeen, there were many communications out of SCFD employees advising them of the transition process. And basically, what that was, out of the twenty-seven crews this year, I've visited twenty crews so far, and has went over, and I've went over this transition plan, but also, we send out weekly and monthly minutes. So they've been watching this process since the very beginning. We started August first. The group consisted of a firefighter lieutenant, two captains, one from operations, one from fire prevention, and a division chief, senior admin, and myself. There will be an official communication out of the SCFD employees, Assistant Counter Manager Rusty Leeds, and I will get together to effectively put that out, but they are aware that this is coming. We're in those final steps today. We're meeting with the commissioners. We've also done some briefing with legal, and again, Rusty and I will get those communication plans out for the fire district employees, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
If you want to talk, there's a remaining seven. You talked twenty out of twenty-seven.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And, and they also, like I said, get weekly minutes and monthly meetings, so.
Okay, Richard, or David?
During this past year, we had a couple of firemen that could have gotten a raise, but they were denied by the union, from what I understand, and we were going to grant it, but we couldn't. Are we going to have that on our agenda as soon as January comes around so that we can rectify that error?
Absolutely, I'll have to get with Tom.
It already was.
The first one in January?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that was the first thing I was going to say, too, I think we talked about the other day. First question. Second question is, I think I know the answer, is there a way to provide us a red line version of changes or no? Or is there just too many documents?
Sure.
We've got nine policies that have changed, and we've got the red line version, but I can send.
Can you, I'd like to just read them in context, it always helps me kind of understand. And then the last thing is, have you got any feedback, concerns, you know, what, I mean, I don't know if people give you all this feedback, or are the firefighters thinking, are they going to?
Believe it or not, they, they have not had very many questions. They knew this was coming. We've communicated this since the beginning, and the station visits have been very pleasant. They haven't really talked about the crosswalk much at all, because they're not losing anything. They're actually gaining some things, so they're pretty happy about that.
They're also getting a pay raise.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll be putting on the agenda for either the thirteenth or twentieth of December for these policies.
No sense of undercurrent of problems or issues?
No, they've been very pleasant, which I was surprised. I took a deep breath on a couple of stations, but it wound it up being pretty good, so not much pushback at all.
Okay, let's see, other questions? Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, all of you, all that made this transition smooth. Anything else, Mr. Manicker?
That's it, round's complete.
All right, commissioners, anything else you can bring up? About Colonel Powell, any other elected folks? Okay, yeah, we wore them out. Any more from the staff? If there's not, we will adjourn. Thank you.